Bien, esto es solo un recordatorio de que estamos en tierra robada. Mi nombre es Stephanie Grant, o Stephanie Guigón. Usamos el pronombre "ella". Soy una ciudadana de Cambridge de cerca, que es cuando llegué cuando tenía siete años. Soy graduada de la Escuela de High School de Cambridge, clase 05. Y soy miembro clave del grupo Black Response y organizadora. El Black Response es una de las ocho organizaciones que forman la Cooperación Electoral de Cambridge Progressive. CIPAC fue fundado este año por algunas de las principales organizaciones progresistas de Cambridge. Incluye ocho organizaciones locales y dos organizaciones aliadas. Los grupos de miembros son: la Alianza de los Tenientes de Cambridge, el Black Response, la Democrática Socialista de Cambridge, Organizadores de la Alquileres de Cambridge, Coalition de la Justicia de la Alquileres de Cambridge, Alianza de los Residentes de Cambridge, Our Revolution Cambridge y la Squad de Solidaridad. Organizaciones aliadas incluyen la Asociación de Educadores de Cambridge, la Unión de Educadores Retirados de Cambridge. En las elecciones de noviembre de este año, CIPAC trabajará juntos para elevar temas progresistas. Esperamos representarlos esta noche en las preguntas que hacemos a los candidatos. Intentamos compartir las posiciones que los candidatos toman sobre esos temas y animar una votación fuerte. Mientras que cada organización aliada continuará operando independientemente y tomando sus propias decisiones, estamos unidas y compartimos el compromiso de ampliar nuestras recursos y organizar cambios significativos y liderazgo en nuestras prioridades y en nuestro gobierno. Quiero decir, Carolyn. Hay miembros de CIPAC que tienen tarjetas de index que están pasando. Correcto, Carolyn está allí. Encouraginga a tomar tarjeta de index. Encouraginga a escribir sus preguntas y puedes sentirte libre de enviar tus preguntas a Carolyn en cualquier momento durante la noche. Y te recordaremos sobre esto en algún momento. Bien, voy a pasarlo a Henry.
Hola, mi nombre es Henry. ¿Pueden escucharme ahora? Sí. Bueno, está bien. Así que soy miembro de Our Revolution Cambridge y co-chair de Our Revolution Massachusetts. Soy originalmente de Brooklyn y todavía odio a los Yankees. Pero sí, sí, estoy de acuerdo con ese movimiento, sí. Hemos vivido en Cambridge desde 1970 y nuestras dos hijas han graduado de la CRLS. Solo una explicación breve del formato para esta noche. Todos los candidatos serán preguntados las mismas preguntas del CPAEC y cada respuesta será limitada a 90 segundos. Tenemos un reloj de tiempo. Correcto, justo en frente mío, está bien. Ella estará viendo el reloj. Y te dejaremos saber cuándo tu tiempo se acaba. Por favor, respete esto como lo hacen otros candidatos. Tendremos el tiempo para hablar también. Y vamos a rotar el orden en el que hacemos las preguntas. También vamos a estar considerando preguntas del público. Y si quieres hacer una pregunta, tienes que escribirla en una tarjeta y Carolyn la tomará. Y tenemos que tener esos en el tiempo para que podamos mirar y seleccionar la pregunta más apropiada. También cualquier pregunta no utilizada nos presentaremos al candidato para que si elige, pueda responder escribiendo o algo así. Está bien. ¿Estamos listos? Dado tu trabajo con personas en la comunidad, en el Consejo de la Ciudad o en otras instituciones, ¿puedes dar un ejemplo de una situación en la que has jugado un papel de liderazgo? Y luego, ¿qué has hecho para reunir a la gente alrededor de la idea que estás advocatingando? Stephanie.
Hola, buenas noches a todos. ¿Todo el mundo puede escucharme? Correcto. Soy la senadora Shawn Wilson, corriendo para la reelección. Realmente feliz de servir y gracias a todos los organizadores y gracias a todos por venir esta noche. Así que a la pregunta, en términos de cuáles roles de liderazgo he jugado y qué he hecho para reunir a la gente. Es bastante extensivo. Quiero decir, crecí en la ciudad, en Cambridge, en North Cambridge. Realmente gradué en esta escuela de high school en 2000. He jugado a menudo el papel, incluso desde pequeñas cosas, para reunir a mi clase. La clase de 2000 juntos y asegurarnos de que estamos, ya sabes, construyendo comunidad, siendo uno con el otro. También he estado en la comunidad con nuestros jóvenes. He servido en este edificio durante nueve años con el programa de trabajo que sirve a los residentes de alquileres de baja ingreso con post secundaria para considerar educación o carrera. Y así realmente reunirlos juntos para ver otros campos y realmente pensar fuera de la caja sobre lo que pueden hacer y quién pueden ser. Así que soñar grande y soñar alto. También pensando en la participación cívica, no solo mi papel en el comité escolar pero realmente asegurarnos de que aprovechen su voz. Encouraginga a que siempre vengan y hablen en reuniones del comité escolar hasta reuniones del consejo de la ciudad. Y creo que dentro de mi comunidad, definitivamente encorajando a la gente no solo aparecer en base a lo que puede ser en la agenda del consejo, sino realmente pensar ampliamente en quién está dejado atrás, quién no está centrado en conversaciones sobre políticas que están siendo creadas e intentando asegurar que la gente que es más vulnerable o más dejada está capaz de tener acceso. Muchas gracias.
Hola a todos, es genial estar aquí. Mi nombre es Somal Siddiqui. Estoy cumpliendo mi cuarto mandato actualmente y corriendo para el quinto y me encantaría su consideración. En cuanto a esta pregunta, me centraré en dos cosas. Una cosa que trabajé, que estaba muy cerca de mi corazón, fue la preservación de las torres de Grinch y eso fueron 504 unidades. Y cuando pensamos en construir alquileres de guerra, es igual de importante pensar en preservar el alquiler actual que tenemos y cómo podemos hacer que eso se mantenga affordable y mantenerlo en la comunidad y asegurarnos de que nuestros residentes tengan lo que necesitan. Y así, con ese ejemplo, teníamos el apoyo total del consejo. Pero la gente estaba muy asustada, así que tuvimos que hacer mucha educación. Así que cooperamos con COOC, cooperamos con otros que podrían ayudarnos asegurando que cada persona que quería una pregunta tuviera sus respuestas. Así que traes a estas organizaciones a la comunidad y realmente aseguramos de que sus voces y sus temores y preocupaciones sean oídos. Y adicionalmente, otra cosa que fui parte de fue Walden Square. Y los apartamentos allí han sido muy, muy desafiantes y muchos residentes habían llegado a mi oficina y pudimos obtener el compromiso de que estos apartamentos serían renovados y están lentamente renovados. Han habido aproximadamente 60 unidades de casi 100 o más, así que hay más que quedan. Pero estamos en camino de hacerlo. Gracias.
Hola, mi nombre es Aya Alzubi. Usamos la serie "She/Her". Y una breve revisión de nuestra campaña antes de sumergirme en esta pregunta es que tenemos una visión de hacer que la ciudad dignificada y affordable para todos. Nuestra campaña cree que no se debe preocupar por hacer rentas o pagar un hogar, que no se debe preocupar por salir seguros, no importa tu modo de transporte, y que no se debe preocupar por pagar comida. Y estamos emocionados de cumplir con eso en temas específicos que vamos a saltar. Creemos en una nueva era de política, una que empiece con la educación y empoderamiento de los miembros de la comunidad porque sus voces importan. En términos de mi experiencia, amo los artes y los deportes. Fui uno de los cofundadores de una organización deportiva en el campus de Harvard que trajo a los estudiantes juntos para aprovechar el poder del deporte y su universalidad para abordar problemas en nuestra comunidad y para ayudar a los estudiantes a participar también con cómo pueden aplicar deporte a sus carreras. Otro aspecto de eso es que fui uno de los cochairs del grupo de trabajo de la Democrática Socialista de Cambridge en el que dirigí el grupo con dos otras personas en apoyar a Harvard a pagar más en términos de devolverle a la comunidad, en términos de también asegurarnos de que ayudemos a la gente a entender que tenemos una forma de gobierno bastante anti-democrática, que fueron dos ciudades de Massachusetts que tiene esta forma de gobierno, y también para reunir a los residentes para empoderarlos cuando la ciudad estaba cerrando el centro de prestaciones, que es un refugio sin hogar en nuestra comunidad.
Sí, hola a todos, mi nombre es Kandisav Rifkin. Estoy corriendo para el Consejo de la Ciudad de Cambridge porque creo que necesitamos encontrar el alma del movimiento progresista y necesitamos encontrar una manera en Cambridge de responder adecuadamente a la amenaza del Gobierno de Trump sobre nuestra comunidad. Creo que la gente tiende a reunirse cuando, y sé que esto es muy simple de decir, pero cuando encuentran la causa valiosa. Y creo que en todo el país, durante los últimos cuatro años o ocho años, muchos progresistas no han encontrado la retórica del Partido Demócrata y la izquierda muy convincente. No la han encontrado muy valiosa. Han sido descortados por los brotes de progreso que han sido ofrecidos por demócratas y por liberales y las excusas por por qué no podemos hacer más y crear más cambios transformadores. Y así creo que como movimiento, como grupo de personas dedicadas a los causas progresistas, realmente necesitamos mirar en el espejo y entender a qué grado estamos realmente capaces de perseguir un cambio boldo. Creo que necesitamos nueva energía y nuevas voces en nuestra política y creo que necesitamos ser más corajosos en las soluciones políticas que perseguimos. En cuanto a mi carrera y las diversas formas en las que he reunido a la gente, yo solía trabajar para un desarrollador de alquileres de baja rentabilidad, Interfaith, desarrollador de alquileres en Minneapolis, donde reuní a la gente entre líneas denominacionales e interfaith para tratar de resolver la pobreza de las dos ciudades. Maestro a miles de estudiantes en Texas, liderando conversaciones en clases de hasta 400 personas sobre cosas como la participación cívica, la democracia y he trabajado aquí extensamente en Harvard también. Gracias.
Hola, mi nombre es Peter Shu y actualmente soy médico. Estoy corriendo porque me encantaría dar los estándares de salud pública para las poblaciones más vulnerables aquí en Cambridge. Eso significa pobreza, uso de sustancias, problemas de salud mental, impedimentos o varias discapacidades. Esa es mi misión y objetivo. Para responder a esta pregunta en términos de roles de liderazgo, diría que al menos durante los últimos cinco a diez años, número uno sería mi papel de médico dentro de nuestra comunidad durante el tiempo de COVID. Y creo que en general nuestra ciudad hizo un buen trabajo durante el tiempo de COVID. Así que, ya sabes, durante el tiempo de COVID, vecinos y yo habría contactado a diferentes vecinos y amigos en mi vecindario para dar consejos sobre COVID y qué hacer si tuvieses problemas respiratorios y cosas así. Así que la gente realmente llamaba a mí y realmente venía a mi lugar y se detuvieron y preguntaron. También hay un grupo de población geográfica alrededor de donde vivo que realmente llamaba y solo comprobaba si había problemas en términos de si hay un derrame, si debería ir al cuidado urgente, si debería ir al ER o si debería esperar al médico de cuidado primario. Así que eso es desde un punto de vista personal. También enseño en la Escuela Medical de Harvard y cuando Trump tomó el control, ya sabes, había un grupo muy distraído de estudiantes y tendríamos discusiones grupales, grupo de apoyo de amigos, y para aconsejarlos, para centrarse en su carrera de medicina. Gracias.
Hola, soy Patty Nolan. Estoy en el Consejo de la Ciudad ahora, amo trabajar por ti y si me reelecto seguiré trabajando por ti, lo que me encantaría hacer. Así que en liderazgo, creo que quiero hablar de un tema que es central a muchas de las cosas que traigo al consejo, que es el tema de prohibir los ventiladores de gas de las casas de alquileres en Cambridge. Es como una de esas pequeñas cosas que quizás no pienses porque es solo este pequeño tema. Es central a la salud de los trabajadores, a la salud pública, a la justicia ambiental. Porque todas esas casas de alquileres alrededor de Cambridge estaban expulsando partículas, pero también estaban perjudicando permanentemente en algunos casos los pulmones y los oídos de la mayoría de los trabajadores, muchos de los cuales son inmigrantes de baja rentabilidad de nuestra comunidad traídos de otro lado. Y mencioné eso porque estaba un poco detrás de la escena, pero he trabajado con la gente de la comunidad de la Coalition de Clean Air y muchos grupos ambientales y ha reunido tanto el punto de justicia ambiental, de salud de los trabajadores, como el impacto climático de las partículas que si no sabes, si vas a un ventilador durante una hora es como conducir de aquí a Pittsburgh. Quiero decir, es asombroso lo mal que son. Para la primera vez este año, todos los ventiladores de alquileres fueron prohibidos en propiedad privada y luego, empezando en marzo, va a ser todos operadores municipales y comerciales. Otra cosa que trabajé en este mandato fue el Plan Master de No每天都 waste trabajando en conjunto con muchos activistas del clima en toda la ciudad. Por primera vez en la ciudad y mis colegas juntos trabajamos para que la ciudad se registre tratando de abordar algunos de los temas más importantes que enfrentamos en la ciudad. El Plan Master de No每天都 waste, solo para que sepan, como el control de rodas, el control de la contaminación alimentaria. Se lo da a muchas diferentes cuestiones relacionadas con nuestro trabajo.
Mi nombre es Steven Sabrino Wheeler. Gracias a todos por estar aquí esta noche y gracias a los organizadores por poner esto juntos. Este es un gran foro. Fui el líder de patrocinio de este mandato en los actualizaciones de nuestras ordenes de la ciudad de santuario para tratar de proteger a nuestros residentes inmigrantes durante este tiempo cuando el gobierno federal está desplegando terror en todo el país, incluyendo aquí en Cambridge. Estoy orgulloso de trabajar en eso con mis colegas en el consejo, con todos los folk here, especialmente el senador Nolan y senador Siddiqui. Esos actualizaciones de las ordenes de la ciudad de santuario hacen dos cosas. Remueven un agujero que permitiría a la policía local colaborar con ICE en el caso de una rueda que hemos visto múltiples en Cambridge, en Somerville y Boston. También dicen que no es suficiente decir que no vamos a colaborar. Si nuestra policía local se llama a la escena de una rueda de ICE como vimos en Worcester, nuestra policía necesita tener requisitos en las ordenes para decir que esto es lo que se espera que hagan. Se espera que documenten todo lo que ven, así que cuando esos folk desafían su detención en la corte, tienen esos notas y tienes que tratar de confirmar que estas personas realmente son agentes federales y no solo chicos de gaviota con máscaras pretendingiendo serlos. No podemos detener a ICE de entrar a Cambridge, pero podemos hacer todo lo que tengamos en nuestro poder para asegurar que nuestros empleados locales se muevan para nuestros residentes. Y estoy orgulloso de llegar al punto donde los defensores han dicho que esta es la mayor orden de la ciudad de santuario en el estado de Massachusetts. También estoy orgulloso de colaborar, reconocer que no es suficiente solo trabajar en el consejo de la ciudad, sino colaborar con las masas progresistas indivisibles y los folk que defienden de Cambridge fuera del centro de detención en Burlington, Massachusetts, y tratar de averiguar con los folk en la línea de hotline de los incógnitos qué puede hacer la ciudad para apoyar esa labor.
Gracias, gracias a todos. Mi nombre es Mark McGovern, soy candidato para la reelección. Así que en términos de ejemplos de situaciones en las que he jugado un papel de liderazgo, aumentar la inclución en el porcentaje de zonaje a 20%. Aumentar los impuestos de linkage a $33 por hora. Pasar la cobertura de alquileres de baja rentabilidad. Pasar los amendamientos de cobertura de alquileres de baja rentabilidad. Alquileres multifamiliares. Cambridge Drive, gracias al senador Siddiqui, quien era maestro, y luego obtuve la oportunidad de trabajar con ella en eso. Comida gratis y almuerzo en todas las escuelas públicas de Cambridge antes de que el estado lo hiciera durante mi tiempo de maestro. Básicamente, toda mi carrera política ha estado trabajando hacia hacer diferencias tangibles en la vida de nuestras personas más vulnerables. Y puedes ver atrás en todas estas políticas progresistas que pasamos en la ciudad y he sido el líder o el co-leader de todos ellos. Y estoy extremadamente orgulloso de eso. Además, soy un trabajador social. Mi vida entera profesional ha sido acerca de reunir a la gente y defender a la gente. Así que acabo de recibir una llamada hoy de una mujer que está enfrentando una evicción en un apartamento de HRI. Ella no sabe qué hacer. ¿Debo pasarla a otro departamento? No, establecí un convenio con nuestro liaison de alquileres que voy con ella mañana para que pueda sentarse justo a su lado y defenderla para asegurar que sus necesidades se satisfacen. Tengo horas oficiales semanales, muchos de ustedes vienen, reciben mi boletín y lo ven. Así que estoy todo acerca de trabajar con la gente, hablar con la gente, defender a la gente. Ha sido toda mi vida profesional y estoy muy orgulloso de ese registro.
Ahora funciona. Soy un aprendiz慢, perdón por eso. Está bien, así que gracias por tus respuestas en eso. Las siguientes dos preguntas se ocuparán del alquiler. Y creo que todos aquí saben que el alto costo del alquiler continúa llevando a las familias de baja y media renta de Cambridge. Todavía estamos perdiendo gente. Y eso es cierto, a pesar de la cobertura de alquileres de baja rentabilidad y el rezonaje, todos los pasos para crear más alquiler inclusivo, la gentrificación de la ciudad continúa. Así que pregunta. Actualmente, Cambridge requiere que el 20% del espacio en un nuevo edificio residencial con más de diez unidades sea affordable para la gente de baja renta. Esto se llama alquiler inclusivo y ha producido cientos de unidades de alta renta en Cambridge que se pagan por el desarrollador. Algunas personas dicen que los desarrolladores no pueden más pagar el 20% de inclusión. ¿Crees que deberían haber cambios en la política inclusiva? Si es así, ¿qué?
Gracias. Así que hay muchas cosas que están sorteo en el camino del desarrollo de alquiler ahora mismo. Hay tarifas, las tasas de interés son locas, es difícil para los desarrolladores obtener préstamos. Realmente no estoy 100% convencido de que el 20% es el mayor obstáculo a eso. Es un obstáculo, añade costos. Así que en este punto, no estoy convencido ni estoy de favor de reducir ese porcentaje. Lo que creo que necesitamos mirar, sin embargo, es si hay una manera de offsetar parte de ese costo. Así que una de las cosas que la ciudad está mirando ahora mismo, y probablemente obtendremos un informe probablemente este mes o noviembre, va a mirar formas en las que la ciudad puede ayudar a financiar más alquileres en alquileres de baja renta en estas unidades. Así que, ¿la empresa paga el 10% y la ciudad paga el 10%? Así que no estás perdiendo, todavía estás en el 20% de affordable, pero los impactos financieros son diferentes. Así que tal vez tengamos que ser creativos al respecto, porque al final del día, el 20% de nada es todavía nada, ¿correcto? Así que tenemos que impulsar el desarrollo de alquiler en muchas formas diferentes si vamos a conseguir alquileres de baja renta, ya sea a través de inclusión o de otros medios. Pero no estoy a favor de reducir el porcentaje.
También no estoy de favor de reducir el 20% de la obligación de alquiler inclusivo. Puedes ver los informes de cuánto alquileres de baja rentabilidad se ha creado a lo largo del tiempo y ha sido más de 1,000 unidades de alta renta en Cambridge. No creo que puedas decir que no funciona. Incluso este mandato con el nuevo zonaje hemos visto múltiples desarrollos que dicen que podemos cumplir con la obligación de alquileres de baja renta. Y creo que es difícil creer que estos desarrolladores están propuesto estos edificios y se están metiendo en manos de vecinos si realmente no creen que pueden hacerlo con la obligación de inclusión. Antes de estar en el consejo trabajé en una política de terreno no lucrativa en Cambridge llamada Lincoln Institute of Land Policy. Una de las cosas que Lincoln hace es estudiar alquileres inclusivos, una de las cosas en las que estoy realmente interesado. Fui a un panel anterior este año con el Harvard Rappaport Institute y algunos otros funcionarios municipales hablando de alquileres inclusivos. Creo que hay cosas que podemos aprender de otras comunidades. Una de las cosas que he dicho es que ahora mismo nuestra zonaje inclusivo es el 20% en diez unidades, es el 0% en nueve unidades. Y como resultado, tenemos muchos más edificios de nueve unidades y mucho menos edificios de diez unidades. Podríamos hacer una función de paso, empezar al 5% en ocho unidades, ir hasta el 10% para edificios más grandes, ir al 15%. Para edificios realmente grandes, incluso podemos ir más allá del 20%, porque la escala funciona. Hay formas en las que podemos hacer esto funcionar mejor y realmente interesante sumergirnos y averiguar cómo podemos aprovecharlo para obtener el mejor uso posible y obtener las unidades más affordables que podemos.
Así que no quiero reducir el porcentaje, pero no estoy segura de que tendremos una opción. Una vez que terminemos un informe inclusivo, si vuelve y dice que no hay justificación económica para el 20%, no seremos permitidos mantener el 20% a través del inclusivo. Podemos mantener el 20%, como han dicho mis colegas, a través de otros medios. Ya sabes, la ciudad pone algo y los desarrolladores ponen algo, pero creo que queremos ser claros que eso viene de un informe que somos legalmente obligados a hacer, que no hemos hecho durante un número de años. Así que también creo que el 20% de cero es cero. Lo que podemos hacer si no se nos permite mantener el 20% es mirar los créditos de impuestos para los desarrolladores que agregan unidades. Podemos mirar un bono de incentivo. Podemos hacer muchas otras herramientas que tenemos en el kit de herramientas para aumentarlo, que es lo que definitivamente debemos hacer porque el inclusivo es una de las pocas formas en las que tenemos alquileres de baja renta en la ciudad. Así que todo depende de lo que esa investigación vuelve y cómo podemos también incentivar a los desarrolladores mismos de proporcionar ese incentivo. Porque ahora mismo, como se ha dicho, la otra cosa que debemos saber es que mientras el inclusivo ha producido alquiler, el informe que recibimos de la ciudad fue que casi ninguno de los aproximadamente 12 proyectos de inclusión estaban al 20%. Así que en realidad no funciona ahora. Solo hay un par de proyectos que realmente fueron construidos bajo el 20%. Todos los otros proyectos de inclusión fueron construidos antes de que el 20% se aumentara o fueron construidos a través de algún tipo de zonaje de contrato que tenía otros elementos en él. Así que es por eso que estoy luchando con esto, es decir, que no ha funcionado hasta el momento, así que tenemos que encontrar una manera de hacerlo.
Así que mi postura sobre el 20% de inclusión es que generalmente a favor de no reducirlo. No lo apoyo. Desde mi personal creo que defiendo la salud pública y, ya sabes, las poblaciones más vulnerables en Cambridge. Actualmente hay 22, creo que 22,000 personas esperando por alquileres de baja renta. No apoyo la reducción del 20% de inclusión. Habiendo dicho eso, si el informe sale y esto se convierte en algo que tenemos que hacer para reducirlo, creo que tenemos que ser creativos. Soy un médico. No todo lo que digo, los pacientes o sus familias oyen y a veces tenemos que ser creativos. Y así, si eso significa de una manera agradable, es decir, reducir unidades, reducir el porcentaje de inclusión, a higher units, a higher inclusionary percentage, creo que eso es debatible. Pero en general, sin más datos o evidencia o el informe, apoyo a no reducir el 20% hasta ahora.
Sí, así que... ¿Pueden escucharme? Ahí vamos. Así que amigos, tenemos un enorme problema de riqueza e igualdad en esta ciudad y nadie quiere hablar de ello. Podemos hablar de construir todo lo que queramos, pero hasta que admitamos que cualquiera de estas unidades de inclusión, la gente que tiene menos del 50% de la área de ingreso medio, que no tiene ya una voucher, ni puede vivir en ellas, realmente no vamos a empezar a abordar el problema de la desigualdad de ingresos y la riqueza en la ciudad. Y así, absolutamente no apoyo la reducción de la obligación de inclusión porque no quiero hacer nada que no nos ayude a mejorar la situación de riqueza aquí. Lo que sucederá es que la gente se desplazará de sus unidades actuales. Esas unidades se redesarrollarán en apartamentos más grandes. No van a haber unidades de alta renta en esos apartamentos para ellos ir, y van a ser gentrificados y empujados de la ciudad. Y la mayoría de la gente sabe que las unidades antiguas tienden a tener, ya sabes, tienden a costar menos por metro cuadrado que las nuevas. Vivo en alquileres de alta renta naturales, muchos alquileres rentables lo hacen. Y así, eso es algo que necesitamos tener un ojo. Pero el mayor problema es qué hacemos para la gente con menos del 50% de la renta. ¿Qué hacemos para una sola persona que gana menos de $56,000 al año? ¿Qué hacemos para una madre de dos que gana menos de $72,000 al año? No pueden pagar estas unidades. Y así, a menos que realmente estemos serios sobre resolver la desigualdad de riqueza en la ciudad, no creo que podamos hablar de la affordability honestamente. Gracias.
Hola, Aya, uso la serie "She/Her". Nuestra campaña, debido a que tomamos un enfoque anti-displazamiento, nos centraremos sin parar en las voces negras y en construir alquileres de alta renta. Nuestra campaña cree que no podemos depender de las mismas fuerzas de beneficio que nos llevaron a esta crisis de alquiler para sacarnos de ella. Por lo tanto, no tomo dinero de desarrolladores de real estate. Creo en aprovechar los recursos gubernamentales para abordar el problema de la crisis de alquiler. Sé que lo vamos a abordar en la siguiente pregunta, pero esa es parte de por qué no creo que debamos reducir la obligación de alquiler inclusivo. De hecho, si es algo, expliquemos aumentarlo. Pero solo para un poco de contexto, tuvimos la reforma de zonaje multifamiliares y tuvimos a los senadores abrir la conversación sobre reducirlo al 10% rápidamente después. Así que si realmente queremos abordar el alquiler de alta renta en nuestra comunidad, tenemos que entender que cuando centramos las voces negras primero, así es como crearemos alquileres de alta renta sostenible. Y otra cosa que quiero abordar también es, quiero defender a los tenientes que también están en estos edificios porque a menudo sus necesidades no se satisfacen. Así que espero que sepas que puedo ser alguien con quien puedes contar cuando sientes que nadie te está escuchando y que sientes que tu gas se ha salido cuando tu dueño no aprecia las condiciones en las que vives que son horribles. Y sé que soy una casa de alquiler que ha tenido que navegar un dueño malo.
Y solo diré... Hola. En ese sentido, lo que dijo, lo que los tenientes de inclusión han experimentado, hubo un informe que fue hecho. Desafortunadamente, las recomendaciones no fueron aplicadas. Pero la ciudad contrató a alguien y lo pusimos en el presupuesto de este año para realmente llevar esa labor adelante y asegurarnos de que estamos ayudando a nuestros tenientes de inclusión y así tengan una persona. Así que definitivamente voy a comprobar eso. Muchas de lo que todos han dicho estoy de acuerdo. Creo que para mí, veo el inclusivo como una manera de mantener la diversidad socio-económica que todavía tenemos. Es limitado, está cambiando, ha cambiado mucho, pero es una herramienta que tenemos y reducirlo realmente sería un desprecio. Y así, como se ha mencionado, ¿cuáles son otras cosas que podemos hacer? Ya sabes, financiar proyectos de zonaje inclusivo a través de subsidio directo o algún tipo de mecanismo financiero. ¿Cuáles son los incentivos de impuestos? ¿Podemos reducir los impuestos de permisos? ¿Cuáles son las otras cosas que podemos hacer para hacer más fácil que este alquiler realmente se construya? Porque ahora mismo el mercado, hay tantas otras... El mercado es lo que es el mercado. Así que la pregunta que deberíamos hacer es, ¿cómo podemos realmente empezar algo de producción de alquiler en la ciudad que tenemos? housing production in the city that we have? There's so many ideas, whether that's the Boston Seller Fund and other mechanisms, but lowering it will not work. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening again, Aisha Wilson. I agree with many of my colleagues, they have already said it really well, that lowering, for me personally, just does not seem to be the right thing. As someone who grew up in public housing, I know affordability truly matters in our city, and now that we have such a growing high cost of living and the rents are just skyrocketing, it's making it even more challenging and unattainable for many of our families to continue to see themselves living in the city of Cambridge. So, lowering inclusionary is just not going to work. And as others have already mentioned, from tax abatements to incentives to other key ways to help and support projects actually pencil through, it's going to be really the way to go, because I truly believe that if we were to lower it, we will not be able to bring it back up. So, without a doubt, we cannot, I personally will not agree to doing that. I do understand that this study that we have moving forward is going to inform us in terms of what we have, you know, accessibility, and we understand that the market right now is making a lot of things more challenging. I just actually learned today that a Concord Ave project that was to bring up several dozen inclusionary units actually is not penciled through, just a few weeks ago, and it's no longer going to be going through, and that's really disheartening to me. I don't have all the details, so, but just want to recognize that that's a problem. Thank you.
Cambridge could provide a substantial number of housing units affordable to very low and low-income households by creating social housing and supporting community land trust, solutions that take housing out of the private housing market. For members of the audience who may not know, social housing is government-owned or controlled rental housing that is permanently affordable to people with a mix of incomes and controlled by tenants and the community. Community land trusts are nonprofit landowners providing permanently affordable owned and rental units with a community-led decision-making body. So, the question that emerges, if elected, would you champion building social housing and support the development of a community land trust to help keep low and moderate-income people in Cambridge? If so, what steps should the council take next? If not, what you will propose instead to meet this need? And out of some of the answers, I was unclear as to whether, given the choice of providing dollars to support inclusionary units, dollars that, dollars that go to developers, would you do that, or would you put those dollars into social housing or a community land trust?
Hello? Hello? Okay, there we go. Yeah, so that's, that's a great question. I, you know, so I, I expect that after the vote last night in City Council, that was 8-0, that the vast majority of the people on this stage are going to say that they support social housing. And I'm really glad to hear that. And it's really fascinating how many things people begin to support five weeks before an election. And so, I really hope that people still support these things come January and February and March, when they began to finally encounter obstacles, and are going to need the courage to stand up to people like the city manager, are going to need the courage to step up to the super PACs that back their campaign, and politicians whose endorsements they've sought. And hopefully that they still have the courage to continue funding this, because ultimately, these questions will come down and they will turn on, on funding, right? How much of our wealth are we going to share with, with the rest of the community? How much are we going to, how much are we willing to increase our tax rate? How much are we willing to use our bonding capacity? And ultimately, to me, this is the ultimate test of whether we are putting our money where our mouth is, as far as our progressivism. So, I hope that these things will go through. But yes, I will absolutely support community land trusts and social housing. I don't just want one social housing building that we have a ribbon-cutting ceremony in front of, I want them built at scale. We have a tremendous bonding capacity and enough money to do that, and I hope that we're being really bold and ambitious with this enterprise. Thank you.
Hi, Al, Zupa, use the Sheer series. I want to echo a lot of what Stan said, and I also just want to take a moment to credit the Housing Justice Coalition that has been leading this work. So, thank you all for really pushing on the City Council to push forward social housing. Our campaign has been relentless on social housing as well, and we will continue to deliver on it if you'll let me onto the City Council. It was on the agenda yesterday, like Stan mentioned, and I got the chance to speak at Public Comment, so that eventually their amendments change so that we have a report by 2026, which is good, and I will continue to push on that. I also think we do need to fund the community land trust that is getting started and off the ground and moving. And we also need to find ways to provide structural support, resources from a land-inventory perspective, or first access to land as well. I also believe that we need to restrict biotech in areas like Central Square, so that we prevent loss of cultural institutions. We're kind of already seeing that with a particular development that's happening in Starlight Square, but hopefully we'll be able to retain our cultural scene there. I would also put the dollars into social housing and not-for-profit development. Again, our campaign is relentless on pouring in government resources and to use housing as a public good. We have a AAA bond rating, we are one of few cities across the United States that has this rating. So, let's leverage it so that we can build housing for our community members that stays sustainably affordable.
I'll piggyback on that. I 100% do, you know, support social housing, and particularly as someone who grew up in public housing in the city, folks who are of low and moderate income, we need more housing for them, and so I'm committed to that. I think the question is how, and what can we do? So, the first step we'll take as a council, we passed this last night, as co-chair of the Housing Committee, I'll work with my colleagues to get a meeting together and discuss what this could look like. I think a big question is funding, right? And as has mentioned, there are avenues to pursue, whether that's looking at a Seller Fund. It's also maybe thinking about pilot, right? We have a payment and bill of taxes, and we're negotiating with Harvard right now. Where else can we find money? So, we're not only thinking about the property tax, our bonding capability, but how else can we utilize public partnership, public-private partnerships to figure out how we get the money, and how do we do it? I think we have city-owned lots, right? So, what are the other options that we can, that are in our disposal, what tools that the city itself can use to lower these, these costs that are associated with building any type of housing? So, I'd say that there are a number of steps. I think I'm committed to it as Housing Co-Chair for this remainder of this term, and I look forward to doing more next term.
Thank you. Dan, Aisha Wilson, and I appreciate the question and appreciate the fact that 9 to 1 it was passed yesterday. You know, and it probably would have been 9-0, right, if our mayor was with us, but she was unfortunately not able to join us last night. I will say this, and again, thanks to the Housing Justice Coalition, because of your work and your effort and your research, you all have really worked in partnership with council members and myself and others to really make sure that this got on yesterday's agenda. But in addition to that, we're going to have to continue to work together and continue to work in partnership on the urgency here. I was the voice last night that said, I want to make sure that this gets into our budget. So, however, we are working urgently around not only just hosting our Housing Committee meetings, but then allowing CDD, our city staff, to actually do the work, so that we can be well-informed to, to definitely make sure that we can fund some of this, and understanding what funding this actually looks like and means is going to be critically important. And so, I think there are a number of different ways that we can go about it. I think different cities do different things, but here in Cambridge, I don't think we have any excuses, and I do believe that we can make that happen by the end of this term into the new term. Thank you.
Peter Shu, I would, I, I would also, I think, it's hard when you are after a few people and you're, you're still saying the same thing and, or at least supporting the same concept, which I think there's a, there's a good cause, to be fair. So, but yeah, I would, I support creating more social housing, and I also support a community, a community land trust. I, I think it's, I think at the end of the day, we're, we're really looking to support the most vulnerable populations in Cambridge, or some of the most vulnerable populations in Cambridge. And I think, I think it's, it's important that, that, you know, so just to bring an analogy, I, I see everyone in the, in the hospital, regardless of their socioeconomic classes. I actually tend to spend more time on folks who are either non, non-English speaking, or they are from a poor, more poor socioeconomic class, because I think, I think they need, generally speaking, they need more help. Oh, my bad. So, generally, they need more help, and if they, if I know that they need help, they need more help, I generally would devote more resources to them, to, to help them out, because I think that's what a society should do. That's, that's just in my humble opinion. So, I would support those concepts. I think the harder question is how, you know? How do we come up with the, with the money? I, I, you know, I think there are, there are, there is a lot of smarter people than me, and I would collaborate with them, and to either work, work that out in a public or private partnership.
Yes, so, I'm totally excited at Jazz that we passed this last night, and I want to address the, both for social housing and land trust, because that was part of the question we haven't addressed as much, but they're both really great, great things that Cambridge can and should do. I was very excited to be able to vote on it. I've talked about this for years, I met with CHA two years ago about can't we do Jefferson Park as some form of social housing? Can't we have Corbin Park some form of social housing? The financing ends up being complicated sometimes, because when you have market rate and middle-income and deeply affordable, the financing can be tricky, but other cities have managed to do it, so we need to be able to do it. And two big reasons we want to do it is, we know for sure that social science shows that economic mobility is far greater when you're in mixed-income housing than if we segregate housing out. It's something, it's a moral imperative, we should be doing more of it here. So much of our affordable housing is essentially segregated, which of course, we want to provide housing, but if we don't have that mixed income, we are not going to get the economic mobility that every single person in the city deserves. It also means you can stay in your house, and if your income goes up, you're not afraid of that, because you can stay where you are. Sometimes in some of our affordable housing, you have to leave once your income goes up, which is something that is a travesty and a shame, and we should not be supporting that. I also think it, it is time here that, because at the Graduate School of Design, I went to a social housing forum, I think some of my colleagues even talked about it, and it was packed, because people understand this is something we need to do, we must do as a society in Cambridge. We don't have that many places that are this way.
Proud to have been the lead sponsor on the social housing policy order that passed last night. I have been working on social housing for years now, and the term that I was not on the council, I started working with the Working Families Party, advocating legislatures around New England, and one of the things I got to work on was Rhode Island's social housing legislation. I've also had a lot of conversations with Cambridge's state rep, Mike Connolly, who was the lead on this in the state legislature, and was proud to show up there and testify in support of the funding that he got from a pilot for social housing legislation, and so really glad to be able to bring, bring this to Cambridge. Social housing is really a paradigm shift, in terms of thinking of housing as a human right, and not just as a commodity like a stock option, thinking of housing as a place to live. At the same time, it's getting back to public housing at its roots, which was supposed to be mixed-income public housing for folks all income to be able to share community together. And to Henry's question about, you know, supporting social housing along with these other priorities, one of the things that's really exciting about it is, if you do it right, the income from the higher-income units in, in social housing can go towards building more housing, because it doesn't have to go to investors, it's going back into building more housing and supporting and maintaining that infrastructure. In terms of community land trust, I have been organizing for this since my first term on the City Council. Back in 2020, when all our events were by Zoom, I organized a Zoom meeting, but I know a bunch of folks around this, and brought folks from the Somerville Community Land Trust and Boston Community Land Trust to say, you know, we don't have one yet in Cambridge, what can we do? How can we learn from this? It's so exciting to see a Cambridge community land trust start to get off the ground here, and I would love to continue to support it on the City Council.
So, I could just say ditto, but I won't. You know, yes, so, yes, I support social housing and a community land trust. I was one of the cosponsors on the policy order last night. I too worked with the Cambridge Housing Justice Coalition to put that language together and to get the votes necessary to get that passed. This is not something I came to five weeks after for an election. This is fighting for affordable housing, and fighting for low-income people is something that I have been fighting for my entire career. You know, I, as a social worker, I have worked countless people who have been unhoused, who are facing homelessness, who are struggling with addiction, who are struggling to put food on the table. I didn't learn about this in a classroom, I learned about this on the street, actually working with people. So, this has been my commitment, it has always been my commitment. We have had lots of successes, I'm proud of those successes. We have a lot more to do, it is a complicated issue, we need lots of tools in our toolbox. Social housing and a community land trust are additional ways to get the housing that we need to help people, and completely supportive of it, it's not only a concept. Thank you.
Great. We're going to take a pause here, and if you have questions, this is the time to hand them over to Carolyn. We will continue to collect them, but I just want to make sure that people know, hand over your questions to Carolyn now. And now, I'll ask the next question. Right. The City of Cambridge adopted new surveillance technologies like ShotSpotter and now, Flock Safety, without demonstrating clear compliance with the 2018 Surveillance Technology Ordinance, which requires transparency and substantive annual reporting. Reports to date have been inadequate. Meanwhile, technologies like ShotSpotter raises concerns about effectiveness, privacy, and potential use by federal agencies such as ICE, while offering little evidence of success in preventing or prosecuting crimes. Please note, you all, that in Cambridge, ShotSpotter is funded through ICE parent agency, the Department of Homeland Security. Given this, how will you evaluate whether surveillance technologies actually serve the safety and well-being of Cambridge residents? And will you commit to opposing future acquisitions unless the city demonstrates both compliance with its own ordinance and measurable benefits to, to resident safety?
Yes, I would absolutely give rid of ShotSpotter. And I think we need to really think more broadly about the way that we're dealing with the carceral system. I think we have to start thinking about root causes of crime, and those relate to poverty, right? And those relate to wealth inequality, and those relate to upstream causes that we need to start dealing with here in Cambridge, as well as understanding how we can better respond when something does happen. We need better officer training, we need to invest more in care and heart, and we need to make sure that also the folks who are being, being harassed and being assaulted by police, that there's some training for them about how to, how to do some safety and protection to whatever degree is possible. But I, I also think that when you're thinking about the root causes, we have to think about early childhood education, we have to talk about after-school, we have to talk about after-school care, we have to talk about stability of food and housing for folks in the city. And in general, making opportunities for people to be able to pursue, you know, fulfilling careers. So, those are all things that I would, you know, invest in, in dealing with crime. And you just want to go back to what, what Mark said, you know, after 10 terms of public office, and I think a lot of folks on this stage sort of are in the same boat, it's interesting that I've never seen the policy order regarding social housing come up before last night. Folks must have been keeping all the good ideas to themselves in their head. So, I, but I do see this a lot, I think, from our City Council. And the other thing that, yeah, thank you.
Peter Shu, I would, is this too loud? Okay, okay. I, I would, I would give rid of ShotSpotter. I, I mean, number one, it really, we haven't really seen evidence, and I'm a, I'm a, I'm a pretty data-driven guy, and I'm pretty evidence-based, and I believe in evidence and data. I'm not ideologically driven, and I, we've seen very little evidence of success in preventing and prosecuting crimes, number one with Shot, ShotSpotter. Number two, it's funded by ICE, and I, I just, I just don't like the current ICE, that's, that's personal opinion. But I'm still data-driven, and there's not, there's really not any, a lot of evidence about, about this in preventing and prosecuting crimes. So, that brings us to the point on how do we do it? I think, I think I would... I think I would agree with Stan on the point that we should do a root cause analysis on what is driving, what is promoting crime and all these kind of stuff. And some of the stuff would be poverty. And I think Cambridge, and I want to emphasize this, I think public health would be a great thing that we can raise in terms of standards in order to prevent some of the crimes. Because we know that on any given night in Cambridge, there are at least more than 500 people homeless on the street. We also know that every year, there is at least over 50 cases of narcotic overdose. And that is underestimated because that's only reported. And we're only talking about narcotics, not other substances. And there are other substance users that kind of contribute to crimes and stuff. And you triangulate those two with mental health diseases. And so, public health.
So I too think we should not be using ShotSpotter. And yet, and also, by the way, in the surveillance world, we should also not be having the license plate readers that we recently deployed. We should also be really careful about using any of the technology that is brought in that will be tied to a national database. I am hoping very much that we are going to revisit that decision. I voted against a license plate reader when it was came up with a couple of my colleagues. I think we need to get rid of that because we are in a surveillance state that we have to be incredibly worried about how ICE will use that data. But I think on this issue, we've heard a round of differences within the community. So I want this issue to be one where we actually truly go out into the community, bring people together, because there are some people in our community who are saying, don't get rid of it because we think it makes us safe. I think we have an obligation to say, here's why we don't think it makes you safe. Here's the actual data on how it is not helping you. But we know you're really worried about crime in your community and we know you think this because you've been told this by the city. We need to have a community conversation so that we're not caught up with, well, some people say they want it, which is what we hear from city staff and some of the police, and then other people are saying no. I think this is a prime opportunity for us to actually walk the talk of bringing the community together, everyone in the community in order to come to an understanding of whether we want this in the city. I don't think we should have it, but I don't think it's necessarily only up to me. I really want to have all the community voices involved in this decision, since again, it's something people think that we're taking away from them that is leaving them more vulnerable. And that is never something we should do.
I'm opposed to the use of ShotSpotter. I've been clear about that during my time in the council. Also opposed to other surveillance technologies like the drones the city requested. In terms of evaluating public safety measures, I think the things I consider are wanting to make sure it doesn't violate civil rights and that it actually promotes public safety. And I think ShotSpotter fails on both of those accounts. The city doesn't have that, doesn't control ultimately all the data. It's the private company sound thinking that runs ShotSpotter. It also just doesn't work as a technology. One of the things I said when we had our council meeting on this is the council, microphones we used, if half the time we used them, they just didn't turn on and then half the time they were sitting over here and just turned on by themselves, we would get rid of those microphones. And that's the case with ShotSpotter. Half the time, it misses actual gunshots. And then half the time, it says something that isn't a gunshot, like a firework is a gunshot. And that just isn't actually helping promote public safety. We could be using the resources that are assigned to ShotSpotter to put towards things that actually promote the fundamentals of public safety in our community, affordable housing and mental health care. And groups like Cambridge Heart and the Care Team are what really addresses it. And folks do want public safety, but I think it's those things that actually promote it rather than a technology that is vulnerable, especially in this time when the federal government is really seeking access to all sorts of information like this.
Thank you. So the surveillance ordinance that the ACLU that we have in Cambridge, or the ACLU called one of the most progressive surveillance ordinances in the country, was actually something that I led on. And I worked with the police department, the ACLU, surveillance opponents, advocates, to create, city manager at the time, to create the policy that's in place. In terms of ShotSpotter, I could get rid of it tomorrow. And I want to follow up on what Patty said. But here's the problem. All of us who have said that we would get rid of it, raise your hand if you live in Washington Elms and Newtown Court. None of us do, right? When, what I have said all along is the people who live there are telling us and telling me, I was just knocking their doors last week, saying that they want more surveillance. So this goes back to Patty's point of how do we have a community conversation? Because they may think this is serving them, but I'm not sure it is, right? But they continue to ask for it. So I could get rid of it tomorrow. I don't think ShotSpotter, the data shows, as Peter said, the data shows it doesn't do much of anything, right? We could get rid of that tomorrow. But the people who live in the communities that are most impacted by the gun violence are saying, we don't want to get rid of it. So we have to do an education. We have to have a community conversation and talk with them. Otherwise, they're going to feel less safe. And you know, if we truly believe that the people closest to the pain should be closest to the power, we need to listen to the people who are closest to the pain. And I've been asking organizations to help do that outreach. Bring us a petition from the people who live there that say they want to get rid of it. Bring those people to public comment. And they're not.
Thank you again, Ayesha Wilson. I just want to pick up kind of where Mark led off. And I was actually going to do that too and just ask, how many of you all actually live in public housing? How many of you all live in Washington Elms? Thank you. Now, every time that there is a crime in that community and there is a meeting at the Pasani Center, the amount of those residents that say they want more surveillance is dramatic, okay? And so, again, I think we need to have community engagement and community engagement that is true and transparent and allows them to be the voice of their destiny for what is going to make them safer, make them feel safer. And if this is not the way for it to go, if this type of surveillance is not it, then we need to be thinking more pro-program. We need to be thinking more intentionally about how to make communities safer that are oftentimes at risk in terms of the community violence. Now look out. We need to make sure houses are secure, food insecurity, all those things are being addressed. We want to make sure that our workforce is really strong and robust and that we are really working to serve it, especially our emerging adults who unfortunately are graduating from this high school and not prepared to take on life outside of this community. When they graduate, they are not going into a trade or into a workforce or into a college. They are going to the streets, okay? And if we are not doing anything to support our young people in our community, we will continue to see violence in these streets. Thank you.
Thank you. I do agree with a lot of what's been said. I think I hear the worry about effectiveness and reliability of this use of technology as a public safety tool. I think we have to ask ourselves, what are the goals of this technology? What are the purported benefits of this? Do they outweigh the harms, right? That's how we should be evaluating any type of tool that we have. And with that said, I do have real concerns around the data sharing, around what the contract actually looks like. When Chair of Public Safety Ayesha Wilson had that meeting, this came up. What's the contract actually saying? We haven't actually received it. So we do, that's a follow-up item on our end from the city to say, what does it actually say? So that's something that we really want to evaluate. We heard from Connie Tran, an attorney, who said one of her clients was arrested after gunshots were detected. There was no firearm found. There was no witness. But that's, the use of this technology is the state's only evidence. And so what does that mean? You know, that is very, very, I think we need to really evaluate that and look at that. And so I'm definitely open to coming together. I do think community outreach is a force.
Thank you. I want to push back a little bit with what Ayesha and Mark were saying because when we talk about empowering a community, we don't come with just one solution and say, this is the solution that will protect you. When we've seen time and time again, violence still occurs. So why don't we address the violence? Our campaign believes that right now, with what we're seeing with ShotSpotter on the data, it's inadequate and ineffective like what we heard from Jeevan. And yet, it's disproportionately in black and brown neighborhoods, which creates a dependence on policing and that deepens the cycles of harm. I also don't believe that we can say we're not cooperating with ICE and then turn to take funding for surveillance that comes from the DHS, which houses ICE. Again, our campaign believes in care over criminalization, care over surveillance. We've also seen that the police department has about 10% of our budget. And yet, we gave them around $600,000 to replace their weaponry. And when it came time to talk about municipal housing voucher program or RISE UP, the city was like, oh, well, we're tight on money. But the police got money from free cash when they already have a 10% of our budget. So let's talk honestly about where we're putting our money and our values when we talk about uplifting black and brown communities in our neighborhoods. Because they need more access to after-school options and they need access to economic empowerment. Right, thank you. Others, oh, sorry. The Department of Homeland Security and ICE have punitively targeted immigrant communities in Cambridge, Somerville, Boston, and other sanctuary cities across the state of Massachusetts. These actions have inflicted a socioeconomic crisis and public health emergency on immigrant communities. When faced with a comparable public health emergency during the COVID pandemic, Cambridge and the state of Massachusetts mobilized programs, resources to support the most vulnerable communities. Would you support a policy order to urge the city manager to invest the resources to launch similar programs, providing material, psychosocial, and legal support to families and communities impacted by DHS and ICE, ICE's reign of terror? If so, what specific programs, if not, why not?
Of course. One thing we learned during COVID was we did things way more quickly than we ever thought was possible. We pivoted. We developed programs. We turned around. We found resources. We reallocated resources. This is just as much of a crisis for many of our families who are facing this kind of action as COVID was for those vulnerable populations. So specifically, what we can do is make sure that we provide the resources for anyone in that situation. We've already done a lot, which I'm sure you'll hear about from my colleagues, that we reallocated some of our housing to make sure that mixed-status families were not going to be at risk. We've taken actually some housing dollars to protect some of the most vulnerable members of our community by reallocating them into a fund in order specifically to help them. So we've already taken much of this. We've also changed our, as Jeevan talked about, the welcoming city ordinance to ensure there's no cooperation. I think the challenge is, what can we do as a city when, if the state comes in and identifies some of these families? That we can't affect, but what we can affect is to make sure every single person in the city, we work with LUCY and others, that they know what their rights are. We have to spread that more. Every single one, city employees and school department elsewhere have been trained. We need the community to be trained as well. There's 200 LUCY volunteers in this community. We're standing up, but we need to do more, which I think the question is, how is it that we can provide the actual resources for those families beyond what we're already doing, which is going to include legal help as well? I think that's the primary thing we can do, which is provide, ensure that everyone gets good legal representation. Thank you.
Yeah, I would also support something similar. We're at a really terrifying time right now. And there are so many cases that don't even make the news the way that Ramisa Osterkastet in Somerville or the Raiders in Worcester that were big in public two weeks ago now. I was called by advocates at 9:00 PM on a Thursday evening because there's a family in Cambridge where the mother and father were going to an appointment with ICE the following day and didn't know if they were going to be detained at that appointment and if they would get to see their son again. Their son was a CRLS student, came here as an elementary school student, was now in high school. They needed a Portuguese speaker to fill out some forms so that if they were detained, Senator Markey and Warren could advocate on their behalf to help figure out, or if they're detained tomorrow, where does their son go? Can he go and stay with the cousin? They just needed someone who could go and help. And so I went with them there. Just such a terrifying situation. They had ankle monitors on, just not knowing tomorrow if they're going to be able to come back and see your son. Those are the cases we're facing right now. The city has some great programs, is doing Know Your Rights trainings by Zoom. We have had hundreds of people come to those, but there's more that we need to do. And part of that is making sure we're not reinventing the wheel. LUCY is doing great work with this hotline out there, but can use some more resources, including legal support, including translation. I was talking with some folks from LUCY yesterday about a similar family that had an appointment from Salem and organizing a convoy to go with them. And we should be figuring out how to do it similar in Cambridge.
Thank you. So I mean, the short answer is yes, I would support a policy order. You know, we, I mean, this is, I don't need to tell anybody in this room what a horrible and scary time this is right now. And it seems like every day, there's some new crazy thing that's getting thrown at us in the community. And I say that as somebody who has a lot of privilege and isn't worried, you know, about anybody coming after me. And, you know, we have done a lot of things. Have we done enough? There's always more to do, right? Patty mentioned the mixed-status families. So the federal government cut the vouchers. So the Cambridge Housing Authority gets some money from the federal government. The federal government cut vouchers for mixed-status families, saying that if someone who lives in that apartment is undocumented, you need to evict those families. We, the city, came in with $5 million to create a voucher program so that we're not subject to the federal rule to keep those families housed. You know, we've invested, we've increased money that goes to legal services for some of the nonprofit legal services that defend immigrants in ICE cases. So we have to continue to do that. You know, we are reaching some challenging financial times in the city, but we should not be balancing our budget on the backs of the people who are most vulnerable and need our support the most. And we need to balance it some other way. But taking away services, not investing in services, is not the way that I'm going to do it. And I don't think it's the way the majority of the council wants to do it. The Transition Wellness Center that Aya mentioned, that was a terrible thing that we didn't fund that.
Peter Shu, the short answer is yes, I would support a policy order, urging the city manager to invest the resources to launch similar programs, providing material, psychosocial, and legal support to families and communities impacted by ICE. I would state again, I just don't like ICE, at least the current ICE. So I would definitely support that. I think we're at a very different time than COVID time, to be very fair. That was where the question stemmed from. During COVID time, generally, generally, I'm not saying every part of the country, but generally, the country was fairly united in terms of how we tackled COVID and stuff like that, vaccines and stuff. Versus right now, you know, ICE is a very, you know, obviously, if you go to different states, it's a very different mentality, just, you know, talking to different medical students at our medical. You know, people would have different opinions on ICE. I think, so the short answer is yes, I would support. And I think the real question is, how do we do that? I think obviously, we should educate some of our immigrant friends with pamphlets and education packets that are in different languages. That's number one. Number two, I also think that because a lot of the folks right now, they don't really, they have this distrust in government. I think we should do our best to kind of reach out to community leaders and leaders from different ethnic backgrounds and so they can spread the news. Thank you.
Can try the standing thing. Okay, hi friends. So it's just interesting to me to hear, you know, three sitting city councillors talk about all the different things that we should be doing for our community, all the great ideas and all the great policy orders they would support. We've had nine months of Trump's ready to tear up. Where have these policy orders been? And I imagine that just given the very positive voting histories of people whose voting histories I often very much agree with, we probably have the majority of the council on this stage who supports these things. And yet, they are not passed. And so I think it's really confusing to me. There's a lot that we can do to borrow from other cities, things that are working well. Municipal ID cards allow a lot of immigrant families to come out of the shadows, make use of government services while at the same time shielding that information from DHS and ICE regarding their citizenship. There's things that we can do as far as investing in immigrant entrepreneurship and various initiatives that would allow them to thrive economically, whether they have citizenship status or not. As far as more short-term objectives, we could certainly increase funded legal aid. We could increase food assistance. There's been a lot of reporting about how immigrant families are reluctant to seek out a lot of pantries for fear that, you know, they may be identified somehow by ICE. And we could create rapid response teams that a lot of other cities are creating that coordinate and consolidate city services. These are all things that are out there and they could have been voting on them for nine months. And yet, we have nothing. Thank you.
Hi, Aya, it is the Sheher series. This is an issue of dignity at the very end of the day. I believe generally across the city council, we need more wraparound services. What we can do here with creating more
What we can do here with creating more programs is streamlining what we do already have and ensuring that it remains protected, kind of similar to what Stan is saying when people are feeling unsafe going to food pantries, for example. So we can bring together and potentially house it under something we call the emergency department. We can coin the term together, but we could create a place where it's centrally locating all kinds of resources that immigrants might need or when they're feeling unsafe, that they can turn to to look for ways in which they can engage and feel supported. I also believe that we do need multilingual guides on how to participate in city council, like right now. Many people don't show up to public comment or even know how to share their voice because it's inaccessible. So I would want to work on ways, as an organizer, I've learned this, ways on helping people and empowering people to know that your voices matter and building ways multilingually to get you there. Because we all need to hear your voices, and I'll make sure that you're there for that. We did that with the Wellness Center when it was closing down by the city. I also believe in creative opportunities in which we can bridge Cambridge Local First with LUCHE to empower our local businesses. We had a local business experience in ICE attack. How can we creatively address that? That's also something I would want to work on.
I'd get up, but I did something with my hip. Sorry about that. So I'll say that all of this, what's been being said, I wholeheartedly agree. But the number one thing that I've heard about in the last many months is people want cash. People need cash. And we've been trying really to work on an expanded rise, think about how we use public money to help people. And there's many of us committed. We were able to find a pilot that was 130 families. That went to next 2,000 families, and that ended in February. And the number one thing I've heard since then is, where can we have more support? So we need to actively work on that as a solution. We can do this here. We can use our city money to help people. And so in addition to what's been said, I think that is a missing resource that can come from the community, can come from our city budget, can come from pilot agreement. You know, I think on the legal aid front, I think that's also another area that I really push. We were able to expand our partnership with De novo this year in our budget. We hired a part-time person, but it's only, they're only part-time. So can we do more than that? And we should do more than that. So that is something that we did start this term and to push for more legal services. And who are the, who are the, we need more, more support for our community. And I think many of us on the council were committed to doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ayesha Wilson again. Thank you all for the question. So I'll just say, I think, just going back to it, that we no doubt are living in challenging times. And we want to make sure that we are protecting and supporting our neighbors. We need to build and be in community to make sure that we know who our neighbors are to even know how to support them. It is important that all providers and all just everyday people are taking those, do you, did you know your rights? Know your rights, excuse me, opportunities so that you actually know, if you do see ICE, you know who to reach out to. If you do know that your neighbor is, you know, dealing with human security, you know who to direct them to, or you know how to get the who to bring to them, right? We have those resources across our community. And sometimes it might just take a phone call and email. Sometimes it just says, you know, tag a friend and let the friend know that you need this support. It's not impossible, but I think if we work with intention, we can help and support our neighbor. The other thing that I want to say is that, as a vibe, as you know, within our schools, within our after-school programs, everyone has been trained. All city staff have been trained to actually know their rights and know how to support residents across our community as well as even our businesses. But I want to just be very clear. It doesn't seem as easy, it might be easier said than done. And I think on the ground, that is something that I want to be truly prepared about, is that piece. Thank you.
Other cities, including Medford and Northampton, Massachusetts, Dearborn, Michigan, Portland, Maine, are using the mechanism of divestment to stand against Israeli genocide in Palestine. Do you support a policy order to end Cambridge's contracts with companies that profit from Israel's human rights abuses in Palestine? And if not, why do you, what do you think the city should do to take meaningful, to take a meaningful stand against starvation and destruction being done by the Israeli government in its occupation of Palestine?
Hi, my name is Aya. When we talk about dignity and human rights, Palestine should be no exception. What we are witnessing is an accelerated genocide for two years, two years. And we are also witnessing over 70 years of a brutal occupation and apartheid regime. Our city has been on the front lines on human rights issues, whether it's South African apartheid or whether it's standing up against the sanctions on Cuba. So we shouldn't stop at Palestine. I believe in offering public criticism to our CPD, both for their lack of action and their poor action in terms of not protecting protesters when their rights, similar to what we saw with the Axe incident. That person should have been arrested. Also, on the poor action side, we're seeing our police department use chemical agents, which we have banned in protests as well, so I would offer my public criticism there. When we talk about divestment, I want to explore HP once again. And I also do believe that we have the chance to make our Arab and Jewish family and community members safe and that we cannot conflate anti-Zionism with anti-Semitism because it makes addressing and measuring anti-Semitism that much harder. And our Jewish family and community members deserve to feel safe, and so do our Arab family and community members.
Yeah, so I would, I would absolutely support that. And I would support, I would support legislation that tries to sever contracts with any regime or company that is involved in war crimes of any kind. And I think there's, there's a number of companies that that extends to. And I think that we have a number of contracts here in Cambridge with, with companies that service the military, both the US military and the Israeli military, and even, you know, contracts with, that ultimately end up coming back and supporting the Russian military. So I think that there's a lot of things that we can do to, you know, at least symbolically, demonstrate our opposition to what's happening. I do just want to say, I think it's the city's responsibility to convene conversations around difficult topics that are driving the community apart. And that includes foreign policy, when that is, was driving the community apart. And I think the city has been absent in the conversations over the last two years in terms of making sure that we have dialogue between the various groups that Aya was talking about. Anti-Semitism and anti-Zionism absolutely should not be conflated simultaneously. Anti-Semitism exists as a real, true, and powerful force. And both of those things are true at the same time. And the community can and should be convened by city council in a way that allows us to have productive discourse on this issue and in a way that makes everyone feel safe in this conversation. Thank you.
Peter Shu. I, long story short, I would support a policy order to end Cambridge's contracts with companies that profit from Israel's human rights abuses in Palestine. I think, you know, we've all seen the news and it's, we are obviously living in a very terrible time in terms of, in terms of this whole fiasco. I, having though knocked, I think the hard thing, the hardest thing is, is how do we, how do we communicate what we want to do to the communities? And, and, you know, having though knocked since November of last year, I've definitely heard Jewish friends and voters who have expressed their concerns. And I think this divestment thing, I would, I would concur that we shouldn't conflate that with anti-Semitism or anti-Zionism. Because I think, I think that is, that is a concept that sometimes people don't grasp. And I think as a city, we do have the responsibility to, to help with that dialogue for both sides. I think, I think as, diversity is the key to driving the society forward. And I think, you know, people can have different opinions and stuff like that. Racism, hate, those should not be tolerated, period. But, you know, around these very difficult topics, you know, do we divest or not? I think, I think as a city, we have the responsibility to educate the community, to bring people to, together, to say, you know, this is the, this is the data, this is the evidence, and we're doing this because of a good cause, not because of hate or not to drive you guys apart or anything like that. I think that is very important. Thank you.
Thanks. I want to start, I agree with Stan that we should have convened the community. We should have also done it around the death of, by our police officers of Said Arifaz. We did not do that. We didn't do it around Israel, Palestine, and Gaza. We are not doing it around divisive, whether it's bike lanes or multifamily zoning. Personally, as I said publicly, we have a peace commission. It should have been that job, like that's what we're doing. Okay, so on another, so I appreciate that and think. I do not, I, I don't support the Palestine exception and I don't support an Israel, exception, exemption. What we should do if we're going to address human rights is look at any company that is doing, doing business in any countries with human rights abuses. That includes right now, in this moment, it is in Israel, Palestine, Gaza. It's also in Syria, and Sudan, and Oringa, and Myanmar. So I don't think that we as a city should stand up and single out only one country when there's human rights abuses across the world that are incredibly important for us, where tens of thousands of people are at risk. We didn't do it a few years ago when rape was used as a weapon in Eritrea. So I really think for our moral certainty, we need to make sure that we're, we're being clear-eyed about addressing human rights wherever it is there. It should be something that we should address. As far as what the city can do, I don't believe the city council at a regular business meeting should be doing foreign policy. I think we should be convening community meetings to bring people together. I think we as individuals, as leaders, have a responsibility to stand up any way that we want at any particular issue, but for foreign policy issues, it's not something that council itself.
I was really glad to see the Medford ordinance referenced in this question because I think it's the strongest in the state so far in terms of demanding divestment from companies that are guilty of human rights abuses, including in Palestine. I think we lean on a lot in Cambridge, but there's also so much we can learn from other municipalities. And I think this is, is one where we can really learn from another city. I talked with a couple of city councilors there a lot, Zach Baer's and Anna Callahan, and this is a piece that we can learn from and do here. I was going to be a co-sponsor on the ceasefire policy resolution that the city council passed this term. I also recognized that it was not enough to just pass a ceasefire resolution and say, we did it, and walk on, without meeting with the folks who actually have the power over our foreign policy. Our federal delegation set up a meeting with Catherine Clark's office, set up a meeting with Ed Markey's office, and invited my colleagues from the city council and agreed they joined. And we said to them, you know, Cambridge is one of the largest cities in your district. This is what we passed, and this is, we've heard from hundreds of our residents, you know, please hear, hear our voices and listen, and demanded it from them. Also, what I met with Ayana Presley, our Congresswoman, who's been one of the best legislators on this. I met with her at Endola Coffee House, a Palestinian-owned place, and made that intentionally and said, you know, thank you for your work on this. What can we in Cambridge be doing to continue to support here? What do you, do you need from us? How can we partner on that? Taking our role at the municipal level, which is ultimately your local government, but recognizing the power we have in connecting with our federal officials who are representatives of your foreign policy.
So, you know, I think that, I agree with Stan and Patty about the community conversations piece. There, a few years ago, there was an issue that happened in one of our housing developments where an inclusionary resident was experiencing pretty blatant racism. And Council Siddiqui and I, I was mayor, and Council Siddiqui and I partnered on creating several community conversations around white privilege and racism in our community. We didn't do that, you know, in this instance. I was also a co-sponsor on the ceasefire resolution. I do think we have a role to play in foreign policy in a few, in a few ways. Do I have any delusion that I think that people are going to say, oh, we're going to stop bombing Gaza and committing a genocide in Gaza because the Cambridge City Council told us to? No. But we have a lot of people in this community who directly impacted by what's going on. We had 400 people come to public comment, some, you know, traumatized by what happened on October 7th, some traumatized by what's been happening since. This was a local issue because it's hurting the people in our community. So I was, I thought it was totally appropriate that we worked on that. In terms of divesting, we did, we did look at this several years ago. City came back, and I was on that policy order. The city came back and said, no. And they said it was too complicated. They said it was, you know, where do you draw the line? Should we revisit that again? We can revisit that again, but it's not going to be a council decision.
Thank you. Commercial buildings are the largest source of greenhouse gases.
Wait, wait. Oh, it's okay. Move a little.
Thank you. Hi, Henry, how you doing? Don't put this nanny too much work. All right, well, thank you. Ayesha Wilson again, and I appreciate the question. And, you know, I think there's a lot that has come up here specifically around even the work of our peace commission. And how do we actually bring our communities together, especially when there's discourse and division? There's a lot of divisive issues across our communities, and this is definitely one. But even as we talk about housing, even when we talk about bike lanes, there are so many issues across our communities where we're not going to all see eye to eye. But it is important for us to have a meeting on the lines and really think about and hear from each other about our own lived experience, about where each other is, so that we can at least understand, appreciate, and respect each other's values and positions. Like some of my colleagues said, I too was, I think, the lead sponsor, or co-sponsor on that January 10, 24 ceasefire resolution. And again, I get that it wasn't strong enough and that, you know, I think to some people it felt like it was bordered down. I do believe that our city and our city council could be more vocal in our abilities to actually raise awareness, but also to bring communities together. And so I'm looking forward to that feedback. I'm looking forward to how to do better and be better in that respect and also recognizing that I'm not going to be perfect in that. So I think just also giving some grace and giving that, you know, allowing that space is going to be important. Thank you.
I appreciate what everyone has said, and I'll add that, you know, I think as one of the first people along with councilors on the run in November 23 to call for a ceasefire that also ordered to not pass, we, I did not want to give that up the next term. And I'm grateful for the colleagues who did come together, all of us who, who said that that was important. And now we're here, and what's happening is unconscionable. And so I do think we can play a role, and we should, we have a moral duty to do whatever we can, whether that's working with our federal partners, whether that is looking and revisiting our human rights. If it's even in, under the umbrella of all human rights abuses, including Palestine, we need to do that. I think it is really important work to be doing. And I think it's more how can we get it done and what does that look like? And the feasibility of it shouldn't stop us from actually coming together and making our voices known about this because we are, we have in the past, and it's no different this time. So supportive of efforts to engage in how we talk about divestment and then further figuring out what that process would look like.
Commercial buildings are the largest source of greenhouse gases in Cambridge. The city council already passed the Building Energy Use. Commercial buildings are the largest source of greenhouse gases in Cambridge. The city council already passed the Building Energy Use Disclosure Ordinance, BUDO, to require that commercial buildings over 100 square feet achieve net zero emissions by 2035. That way, they will not need to be retrofitted to meet emission standards. Do you support a mandate BUDO so that new commercial biomedical buildings over 25,000 square feet also have to achieve net zero emissions by 2035? Why or why not?
Probably the one question that I, probably not in my wheelhouse quite as much as some of the others. But, you know, what I want to do is I want to, with any of these issues, right? We can, I can sit here and tell everybody what they want to hear, get claps and snaps and everything else. But these are complicated issues. When we looked at this BUDO amendment and where to draw that line and reach the goal by 2035, the data that came back from CDD and from the city was that that wasn't possible for buildings of that size, right? So if we look at this again, and I'd be happy to amend and look at this again if that's what the data shows that we can do. And of course, we need to get to, we need to, the climate crisis is one of the most, you know, important things facing us, and we should try to get to address this as fast as we possibly can. But we also have to put But we also have to put things in place that will actually work and get us there. So I can't sit here and tell you that 25,000 square feet is the right number. I'm not sure anybody can necessarily say that exactly without the data in front of them and doing the research. But if we continue to evaluate and look at this and it turns out that we can do that, I would absolutely support it immediately. But that's not what came forward to us when we passed this originally. So let's continue to look at it. Let's continue to evaluate it. Let's continue to push the envelope. Let's continue to move as quickly as we can, but sometimes it may not be as fast as we want. So it's not a simple solution. So yes, short answer, I would support an amendment if that's what the data shows that we could do.
Yeah, I put support. I think Kendall Square is sometimes called the most innovative square mile on the planet and that should extend to the buildings, right? In terms of their energy and sustainability. I also want to talk about what we need to make sure we do with our municipal buildings and our school buildings because we need to be leading by example when it comes to climate preparedness. This term, I did a bunch of work on making sure we, as a city, took advantage of the funding from the Inflation Reduction Act. There was a funding in that bill that was passed under the Biden administration called Direct Pay that made it available for municipalities to get funding for solar panels, for geothermal. And we're utilizing some of that funding because of advocacy for the Tobin School, which is going to have a groundbreaking, a ribbon cutting in a couple of weeks for solar panels, for geothermal. We're using it for the fire headquarters around the corner from here and the DPW Samarit Building on Hampshire Street. We also have to keep looking at state programs. The federal government is going to be really tough to get support from the next few years, but the state government still has support. I was just meeting with someone who works for the State Commonwealth Foundation. There's going to be funding for after-hours programs for job training sites that do green jobs, including wherein the building also houses Rista around the corner from here. They have green job training programs during the school day, but it is vacant right now at night when we are here. We get some of the funding from the state government. We should, could have that running during the evenings as well and helping people get trained for green jobs, of which there are still many in Massachusetts. So we need to keep pushing on this at the local and state level.
Thank you. Yes, I'm not sure 2035 is actually right because we just passed it now, but I do think 2040 should be the latest. Let's remember, we use the word emission. We should always say emission pollution because that's what it is. It harms us in so many different ways of public health. So the other thing, just to correct the question, is already new, new buildings in Cambridge, we should all be proud. Every single new building other than a lab because the state made us exempt it has to be fossil fuel free. So our new buildings are not the issue. It's every single building that we see around here has to be net zero by 2050. If Cambridge can't get there, there is no hope for the world. We know there are literally countries already underwater because of the climate crisis. We have a moral obligation to address this. So I would definitely think and I would work to have it be 2040, I think, for those buildings. Already right now, if you don't know, that the 25,000 to 100,000 square feet buildings need to reduce their emission pollution to net zero by 2050. That's in the ordinance, but as was said, the largest buildings are by 2035. Also, remember, I think what we can do and should do is take the institutions because covered by this is also Harvard and MIT. MIT's commercial and educational use. And if they can't do it or won't do it, what we put into BUDO, which is one of the amendments I'm most proud of, is to say, "Great, you can't do it, you don't want to do it, you're going to take that carbon that you would have done anyway. You're going to pay for an affordable housing development either in Cambridge or somewhere in the state to be able to decarbonize so that you are still going to decarbonize and we're going to help the folks in the country, in the ISO New England, in the region that can't afford to decarbonize because it's critically important. We all do it eventually. We have to get to every single building around." So I think it's leadership, but we need more.
Peter Shu, I would, I would support a vending BUDO so that new. Now, I agree with Mark. I don't, I don't know if 25,000 is really the magic number, to be very honest. I also agree with Patty. I don't know if 2035 is the magic number. But the question is, you know, the question is that, you know, do I support? And the answer is yes, I do support. It's a very simple answer. BUDO on, on the new commercial biomedical buildings over 25,000 square feet to have to achieve net zero emissions by 2035. And the rationale is simple. Carbon emission has negative health effects, both directly and indirectly. So from a public health standpoint, I would definitely favor that. You can, even if you were to change the question to 2026, I would say, "Yes, I support." Is it achievable? I don't think so. You know, if you, if you lower the, lower the, lower the size to, I don't know, 2,500 square feet, would I support? I support. Is it practical? I'm not really sure. So I don't have the magic numbers, to be very fair, but in terms of this, in terms of this particular question, net zero emission, I would support because of, because of negative health effects, both directly and indirectly by carbon. And that's from a public health standpoint. Thank you.
Yes, I was supporting the action, this scenario where I think the current council has done a really great job. I think we're on a really great path in terms of minimizing our emissions and our carbon footprint. And the reason that we're doing this is not because going to net zero in Cambridge is going to solve the time of crisis and it's not because it's going to, you know, get rid of global warming. It's not. The reason we're doing this is because it demonstrates leadership, as Patty said. And that leadership, we're doing it because it's the morally right thing to do, but we're also doing it because we hope that other cities, other municipalities, other states will follow our lead, as they have with a lot of other policies. Some I agree with, some I don't, but with regard to housing, with regard to, even when Rise Up was, was created during the pandemic, there was articles all over the country about how innovative Cambridge was being. And it is awfully disappointing and tragic that we are not funding it this year. But we can demonstrate leadership, the same kind of leadership that we want to demonstrate in the environment, we can demonstrate in other spaces. What about income inequality? What about poverty, which still is above the state average here in Cambridge that we don't want to talk about throughout the length of this conversation here today? What about wealth inequality? What about the fact that one-third of Cambridge residents are food insecure? There's a lot of areas where we can demonstrate leadership and tangibly help folks here that are in need. I would hate for the environmental aspects to be the only areas where we would like to lead and forget folks, you know, who are struggling with poverty and upper mobility. Thank you.
Hi, Ayesha Wilson. I just want to first start off by saying that youth have led on the climate change crisis and intergenerational organizing has been such a powerful tool in that progress. So I just want to acknowledge that. I do support this. Our building emissions are the highest. We're about over 50% emissions pollution. I credit Patty's work and also Quentin Zonderman's on climate in the city council. We're at 57 between residential and commercial. So we really need to pour more into making sure we're safeguarding this and putting pressure so that we reduce our emissions. Another piece of this that I want to work on is building an equitable plan to eliminate residential building emissions because again, that number, 57%, includes both commercial and residential buildings. I also want to acknowledge that climate change disproportionately affects marginalized communities. So we also have to be mindful about how we're going into our neighborhoods and addressing climate change, in particular to areas like the port or Riverside and Cambridge Port, such that we're offering ways to help mitigate the climate change crisis as it affects multiple communities.
I think I wanted to just remind us that we, because of the fossil-free ordinance, you know, we, we do require new buildings and major renovation projects to be fossil-free skill-free. And as one of the folks who worked with Patty and Quentin on BUDO, I think we did have to compromise. We did have to make those decisions. There were a lot of condo owners who were scared, right? Who were like, "Wait, we're going to go bankrupt." And so we did make exemptions and I do think how we manage those exemptions and how that impacts emissions is something that we should continue to look at and discuss. So I'm definitely open to that. You know, the effects of climate change worsen every day. So however we can and whatever we can do to mitigate is really important. I think on that note, you know, there's other things that we should be thinking about as well. We have to think about our heat emergency plan. We have to think about how to make it more, have cooling centers, make, you know, have more outreach to seniors, people with disabilities, other vulnerable residents and help them and help people and property from flooding and many of the other key climate change issues that are happening. So very open to always looking at BUDO. I think first that's where we are and then think about what was, what we weren't able to do and what we maybe can do moving forward.
Thank you, Ayesha Wilson. And I just want to appreciate the conversation and also just the work that has been done by my colleagues in the past prior to my tenure on this. But I also want to raise up the fact that we are not living on an island. Cambridge is not an island of its own and we have to work with our regional partners. There is a critical piece of making sure that Boston is doing this work, that Somerville's doing the work, that Watertown's doing the work and that we can be collectively doing the work together. It doesn't matter that Cambridge is super innovative and far ahead of all of our peers and our partners, our neighbors, if they're not actually able to move along as well. So I want to see us having those intentional conversations and I want to see us being collective in terms, and really collaborating, pooling our dollars together so that we can be doing this region by region across the state. In addition to our resiliency centers, you know, I think about our Cambridge Community Center, that they are still lacking funding to make sure that they can actually be the cooling/warming center in case of an emergency or in case of a disaster so that our neighbors can have the heating and the cooling that they may need. That's funding that was cut from the federal government. That's work that we've been trying to do on the city level to make sure that they can still get that funding to make sure that that project is able to be complete and they are able to serve. So we have a lot of work to be doing in our city, but I don't believe that we need to be doing it alone, that we definitely need to be intentional and working with our partners. Thank you.
Now we're going to switch, we're going to switch to questions from the audience. However, it's been a long evening. You may have noticed. And people, people want to move around. So we're going to ask you, and this is tough for all of you, to limit your answers to no more than one minute. And if you have a one-word answer, we won't object. Just so you know. However, this is a challenge because you don't have these questions in advance, neither did we. These came from the audience. So who's going to be the first at the microphone? We'll see. We'll see. All right, you ready? Okay. In June, the city closed the shelter for single adults at Spalding Hospital. When asked for the reason by the unhoused advocacy community, the city manager cited loss of funding.
Hold up the mic.
The city manager said there was a loss of funding. Meanwhile, the Cambridge Police have launched a pilot program in which plainclothes officers are positioned outside of the safe injection site to arrest people. Do you believe this is the right use of city resources? If not, what will you do to reopen the shelter?
Okay, hard to do in a minute. First of all, the police are not stationing people. We don't have a safe injection site. I want one, we don't have one. Police are not putting plainclothes police officers outside to arrest people. That is not happening. I don't know where that information came from. In terms of the Transition Wellness Center, during COVID, I actually was the person who worked with the city to help open that center when it was in the field house at the high school and then move it over to Spalding. I think it's horrible that we didn't continue to fund it. I was one of the leaders in trying to get that money reinstated into the city budget. When I joined the city council 12 years ago, nobody on the city council was talking about homelessness. Nobody. We now spend $20 million a year in homelessness support. I like to think I played a part in that. And so I completely disagree with the, with the city manager cutting that funding. Yes, the funding, it was funded by ARPA. ARPA ran out. We should have continued to fund it anyway because we need different levels of housing for different people. Some people need to be in shelters, some people need to be in transitional housing, some people can be in permanent housing. That was a travesty on our part.
I agree with Councilman Governor, I advise me regarding about, we shouldn't have closed the shelter. I was a co-sponsor on the policy order. I just want to talk about the revenue part of that question because that was funded by ARPA federal dollars and when those dollars ran out, that was the reason the city closed it. So we need to figure out what we can be doing to replace this federal money, especially during the Trump administration. And there are ways we can do that. I've pushed for a jobs training linkage fee from large corporations, increased pilot payments. Harvard and MIT don't pay taxes, right? We need to push for more pilot payments. I also led our council to put a resolution forward to, there's a state bill that would make it mandatory that they pay 25% of what they would pay in taxes. There's no reason Harvard should have the same nonprofit status as the homeless shelter across the square. We should be getting millions more dollars from them. That's one way we can do that.
So I supported the, a decision to close because what we were doing at the same time was opening a brand-new 62-bed house for sheltered and supported services. So it was more than the population at the Transition Wellness Center. And the information from the city was that the Transition Wellness Center was costing us as much as three times per bed as some of the other services being provided. And we have to make really, really hard choices. I agree that we need to find more funding. We found a place for every single one of the people who were in the Transition Wellness Center. That doesn't mean that we can't continue to do more. We are going to face way more challenging financial choices in the future. So I think that what the city manager did was really thread the needle with council support to come up with several million more dollars that were deployed to our most vulnerable population, which is what we had to do given that the ARPA funding had, had run out. So was that the question I answered? Okay.
I, I think it was sad that the transition, the shelter was closed and I, you know, from a public health standpoint, I would, I would support, I would, I would not have supported that. I would support opening one or actually more, to be very fair, for, for our most vulnerable populations. And, and the other thing is I would also support having safe injection sites.
Yeah, I agree with everything Mark just said. And Patty, the reason I'm running, the entire reason that I initially got into this race is because you and a few other people voted to close the Transition Wellness Center. That's why I'm in this race. I thought that it was incredibly, incredibly poor decision by the city. I think it really is a poor reflection of our values. I thought it was really spitting in the face of progressivism. And I think we have to be honest, you know, a lot of folks are proposing revenue models and pretending that there's a magic wand that we're just going to get money from somewhere. The truth is, we have to be honest about the fact we have the lowest residential property tax rate in the region. And if we're not willing to come to terms with that, we're not really progressive. If we're not willing to come to terms with the fact that we are spending less in our taxes than other communities are in terms of what they're giving back to their communities and we're cutting social services, then I don't, I think there's more rhetoric there than action. So I think we can still have the lowest residential property tax rate in the region, but not by as much and be able to fund all these priorities. Rise Up, the shelter, all these things. And then I think we could honestly say that we're truly being progressives.
Ayesha Shear series. The wellness center costed us a little bit more because it was delivering more to people. And if we want to talk about what dignity means, then we would have kept the wellness center open. I was one of the people who was on the ground with the wellness residents to help empower them so that they know that their voices are real and that they are dignified human beings and that the city shouldn't close down the shelter. We walked in the rain to that city council meeting so that city councillors can listen to their voices. Because at the end of the day, you guys, who are we if we do not see the dignity within each other? That's why I believe the wellness center should not have closed down and I would want to, as a city councillor, open a new homeless shelter, one where we can provide food and housing and medicine, which is what a lot of these residents got at the wellness center. So I thought it was a good investment to actually deliver on multiple facets of someone's life so they can get it back on track.
I stood with everybody, my colleagues who are here today to voice our real concerns around closing the Transition Wellness Center and also the process behind how that happened. I really did appreciate how we pit so many interests together to, we have a billion-dollar budget. And as has been said, there are competing priorities, but we shouldn't be having these essential priorities for the most vulnerable in conversation. I think we, you know, we could have, I think, done more and we certainly tried. You know, I think it's very easy, you know, not to know how, you know, things are going to get actually done. We were really thinking about how do we, how can we make this happen? And the reality is, it did come back to the city manager and his decision to say, you know, you all have a choice here. And that's why if he was, did really, really push and say, we didn't want that to happen.
Thank you and thank you for the question, Ayesha Wilson. And I just will say personally that as we have continued And I just will say personally that as we have continued to advocate for that and I want to thank those who organized and getting those residents from the Wellness Center to the City Hall. Because again, hearing from the vulnerable residents is key. And it is about putting a face to those voices, to those stories, to the situation. When we talk about data and numbers, those numbers and data are people. So having the people actually be there to speak for themselves was absolutely important and why I stood very committed to making sure that that policy order was to pass, but at least bringing it back up, bringing it back up as many times as we possibly could during the course of the budget cycle. But what I want to also say is, what do we value in the city and what don't we value? Right? We're spending, and I just want to name it, we're spending $150 million over the next five years on bike lanes. But yet we can't keep a $3,000, a $3 million shelter open. Let's be mindful of that. Thank you.
Many city councillors championed the creation of the Community Safety Department and the CARE team. Yet, yet, the CARE team is only being asked to respond to a small percentage of the 911 calls for which they are approved. How will you keep pro-police interests from limiting, some would say sabotaging, community health alternative responses?
What part of the question is?
Yes.
The question part, is it?
No, it's hard to read. What would you do to increase?
Oh yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, look, we spent several million dollars creating this Community Safety Department. We're not using it. That Community Safety Department also has a contract with HART. They're not really being allowed to work with HART. So, if we're investing that much money, I'm totally on the record with this, that we should be using it, we should not be using, look, picking up needles is good. They should be, first of all, 24/7. The problems don't just end 9 to 5. We have a staff that's not even available at night for some of our most vulnerable population. And we're not using them appropriately. They're also trained social workers. That's why we started it, so that the police don't have to go there. And then the police start their own social worker co-response team without even telling care. So, this is not good management and good governance. So, if the question is how are we going to do this? We have to really use that Community Safety Department for how it was set up to be used, have a continual contract with HART because they also have trained people who can go out in the community. But some people want to call a city department. They can call CARE. Some people don't want to call city department. They should call HART.
Yeah, when the police department have tried to overstep CARE and HART, I have stood up against that and they added a social worker and started responding to calls without getting the approval of the council. I didn't approve the police department with a favorable recommendation. And that is the reason why. The CARE team is doing great work. They're still not 24/7. We've got to be expanding their hours. We've got to making sure that they can respond to all the calls they can because so many of the calls the police are doing right now, they're mental health calls. They're, you know, a case responding to a person who's unhoused. These are not cases. You need a person with a gun for. We should be making sure we have our CARE and our HART teams responding to those. Also spend a bunch of time to start making sure that the funding for HART that's in the Community Safety Department actually got there, got out the door, that we got over the procurement questions that were there. We have, HART is doing a ton of amazing work on a very limited budget and we need to make sure that the city is supporting them and that we're expanding the CARE team to be 24/7 like they should be. I'm going to keep pushing for that.
So, I'm actually really proud of the CARE team and the creation of it. I co-chaired the Reimagining Public Safety Task Force after the murder of George Floyd that resulted in the Community Safety Department being created. One of the, one of the challenges and one of the things we have to remember is it's still only about a year old, right? So, we've got to continue to fund it. We need 24/7. Look, I'm a social worker. You're not going to get anybody who's going to say that we shouldn't be supporting social workers doing outreach. But it is a year old. It's continuing to grow. Part of the problem is that the folks in the 911 center, when they get a call, they err on the side of caution. And so they say, oh, this could potentially be a violent situation, so we're going to send the police. They need to be trained better to say, no, 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 this is a mental health call. We need to send out the CARE team instead. So there's a little bit of friction there. There's a learning curve there. We're working on that. But again, when this comes up as a budget question, and this goes back to what we've been saying all along, where are they need more money to fund that 24/7? Where are people going to stand when that question comes up?
Peter Shu, I would, I, I think we are definitely underutilizing our CARE team. And I think CARE team was a great, probably one of the greatest creations here in Cambridge over the past five to 10 years, in my humble opinion. And I think we are underutilizing that service. And, you know, for me, I would, I would definitely say we should expand CARE service. You know, I think the question had to do with, you know, how do we balance the pro-police interest in all these kinds of stuff? I think, you know, I definitely support 24/7 CARE coverage. How do we get there? I'm not really, you know, there's obviously a budgeting issue. And so I think what we can do is initially we can, we can do maybe not, you know, 95, maybe, maybe, you know, extend the hours to like 12 hours a day. And then at the same time, we should have studies done to show that this actually really, really does improve. And then eventually we can do, we can expand to 24/7. Thank you.
Yeah, so I think there's a lot we can do. One of the things is certainly more police training, more mandatory training of people at the call centers. Certainly, we could expand the pie as far as the budget. And I think this goes back to what I was saying earlier. You know, we don't need to, we don't need to have, we don't need to pit bikes against public safety, against the shelter. We are a really wealthy city. They can't afford to do all those things and still have the lowest property tax rate in the region, alright? We are just choosing not to do that and we have to sit with that. As far as, you know, a lot of folks have said, you know, the city manager isn't doing a great job with HART, isn't doing a great job with CARE, isn't doing a great job with funding the shelter. I do just want to point out that, friends, the oversight of the city manager is you all, right? And so, I, I think there needs to be more pushback. The city manager is not a colleague. The city manager is a direct report. And there needs to be a change in the posture of the council and how they relate to the city manager. If the city manager doesn't comply, there needs to be regulations. Thank you.
Hi, Aya. So, I actually reached out to someone on CSD staff because I thought that there was a little bit of confusion, right? Because the co-response model was a reactionary measure done by the police department when the CSD was created. So I don't support the co-response model that the police created because that was literally the purpose of CARE and the Community Safety Department. So it kind of put people against each other. I also believe we didn't even give chance, we didn't even give HART the chance to thrive. I mean, we look at the Safety Department and I believe if we give it HART the funding, it can take it to the next level. And now it's turned to community to be able to keep itself going. We also know that the Emergency Communications Center that gives all the calls to the police, CARE, is actually within the police building. So when we talk about who gets what, let's recognize that the Emergency Communications Center is inside the police building and on radio, the police have access to everything. So no wonder why it's hard for CSD to get anywhere.
I made my concerns known during our budget cycle when I didn't, along with Jiven, approve the police budget. Because what I think happened to develop these dualing kind of response models, you know, lacked a lot of transparency. I also don't think even our city manager knew that this was happening. I think it was an intentional effort when the CARE department was being developed that I think members of our police department did not think CARE could go off the ground. And so I do think that it was very, very detrimental to, you know, what's happened. And I think moving forward, as I mentioned, we have to support our CARE department. We have to support all models that are trying to shift away from the police and really fulfill the actual goals and theory of why we actually want this in the first place. I think those are getting really, truly lost. And I think whatever we can do, we need to do.
Thank you again, Ayesha Wilson. Thank you for the question. And I'll just go into saying that ultimately, you know, this is why my motto is "Together We Are Better" because right now we are operating in silos and this is the Cambridge way. We oftentimes operate in our own little lanes and we never think about how do we cross-collaborate, how do we make sure that we're stronger together? And really think about ways that we can be more in collaboration versus in separate silos. And so, the issue with CARE, which I think is a phenomenal program, if it was able to actually work at its fullest potential, I think the work in efforts of HART, if they were able to work at their fullest potential and be funded, would be phenomenal. There is enough, unfortunately, there's enough need in our city for all of these entities to actually be built and fitted. But there's also those codes that I've been learning through this process of asking more and more questions about how these codes actually come from the Emergency Communications System to the CARE team or to the police or whatever. More to talk later. Thank you.
Alright. I'm afraid that we won't have time for a third audience question. I think this has been an extraordinary forum. I want to thank the audience for staying with it. And I really want to thank the entire panel for really thoughtful and intriguing answers. The answers were a challenge as were the questions. So thank you all and we'll see you tomorrow. I don't want to hear more from all of them.
How long do we have?
90 seconds.
Thank you. Who are you siding with, Stephanie?
Okay.
Alright, I'm going to get up for this. Thank you so much for being here and, you know, listening to us. With me, you'll get someone who can do the work and get it done. I think for the last turns, I have a lot on housing, education, and economic ability. These three issues have been something that I've been committed to. I ran for office in the first place to combine my love of constituent services, working one-on-one with people, helping with their problems, and then on broad policy work. These years I've delivered. I'm committed to doing the work. I'm committed to listening. I come from this community and one of the only few people who has a law degree, maybe the only one who has a law degree. I bring that lens to the work, to all the solutions that we need. I look forward to meeting you out on the doors. I would love your consideration for that number one vote. It's really important. We want people you like who do the work, who get it done. It's, please vote for me, Somerville.
Great, thank you so much again, Ayesha Wilson. I'm asking for your number one vote on November 4th or before. You can also find me at votayaisha.com and votayaisha on all social media platforms. I am a social worker who is often thinking about being this consensus builder but also a systems thinker. I want to make sure that we're able to really wrap our arms around our community. And in order to do that, we have to be intentional but actually get to know our community members. And that's something that I don't think we spend enough time doing. This work is something I'm very passionate about. I am a mother, a single mother by choice, to a toddler who is very active. But I was raising this community and I want to make sure that I can able, that I'm able to continue to live in this city to raise him. He deserves to live in this city. So we need to make sure that it's affordable, that our educational systems are strong, and that we're able to do all that we can to further betterment of our young people across our cities. Again, I want to thank you all for coming out. And I also do really appreciate you all and hope that you're able to give me your number one vote. Again, I am the third Black woman and Black woman of color to serve in the history of the city council. I don't think that's progressive enough and we have a hell of a lot of work to do. Thank you all so much.
Thank you also for sticking with it and being here. And thank you to all the sponsors, Mark McGovern, and to Amaskin for your number one vote. You know, when I look at the folks who, the organizations that are sponsoring tonight, the Black Response, the Cambridge Housing Justice Coalition, I know the Cambridge Residents Alliance is here, Our Revolution. I have worked with all of your organizations. When you, when you have wanted to forward housing vouchers, you call me. When you want to work on homelessness issues, you call me. When you want to work on affordable housing issues, you call me. When you have personal issues with people that you know in the community who are struggling with homelessness and need help, you call me. And I'm proud of them. I'm glad you called me. Keep calling me. Because it's going to take all of us to continue to work together. I think there are some great non-incumbents running who I would like to see join us in these efforts to, you know, address these complicated issues. But don't forget the people who have been there in the trenches doing this for a long time. We have accomplished a lot. Are we perfect? No. Housing is still too expensive. We still have a two-tiered educational system. There are still too many people unhoused on our streets. There's still one in seven kids who go to bed hungry every night in one of the richest cities in the Commonwealth, right? A lot of work left to do. I'm proud that I have, of the work I have done and I want to continue doing it. Not on your behalf or my behalf, but on behalf of the people who aren't in this room who need the community and need a council that's going to stand up and fight for them. I believe I have done that and I want to continue doing it. Thank you.
My name is Jiven Sabrina Wheeler. My mom and I depended on affordable housing and childcare when I was growing up. And I'm running for reelection to make sure that more people have access to it in Cambridge. I'm a renter. I live in a triple-decker. I have too many friends who are teachers or nonprofit workers, get priced out of the city and gotten a rent in Greece myself every single year. I have dedicated my career to working on these issues even before I was on the council at a nonprofit and at the Working Families Party, advocating our legislatures throughout England. On the council, I have led the fight to strengthen our sanctuary city ordinance, led the fight to end forced brokers' fees to rent an apartment, and led the push for social housing and a community land trust in Cambridge. I need your number one vote. I lost my first reelection by just a handful of votes and it could happen again. These are policies that you care about, that you value. I am asking for your support tonight. Thank you to the organizers. Thank you all for coming out. And please talk to your neighbors too, because that is how we're going to build a progressive city council, is by getting more folks to turn out to local elections.
Alright, I'm Patty Nolan. I got started in my career before I turned to local politics, doing employee ownership of worker-owned firms, union buyouts in order to really shift that wealth-building within our communities and addressing economic inequality. I also worked on economic development with LISC, creating jobs in inner cities. So that's my depth of professional experience before then turning to local politics. I think you want that kind of experience because I bring that also to the finance, as chair of finance. And this next term, we are going to face financial headwinds that we have not faced for 20 years. Between the attacks on Harvard, our largest employer, between the federal government, we, between the downturn in labs, we're going to have to make really serious financial choices. And I think my deep experience and understanding of finance and how it interacts is something that's really critically important on the, on the city council. I'll also say that I actually agreed, based on that financial decision, to address directly, the Transition Wellness Center needed to be closed only because we had already opened. That was left out of the conversation. A 62-bed, new position for those. And every single person in the Transition Wellness Center found another bed. I think we have to be conscious of the choices we have to make, given that this is a city with enormous resources and yet even we are quite constrained in what we do. And I will say, anytime you're, we didn't do anything, for instance, about ICE, that is just blatantly wrong. We have language justice issues. We've done tons, as Mark responded to Stan's post in the Cambridge Day. Let's really dig down and understand what the city is already doing before you criticize us for not doing things.
Peter Shu here. I, I'm also asking you for your number one vote, just like everyone else. I, you know, four years ago, when I, when I took care of a patient in the hospital for drug overdose, young kid, 30 something-year-old. And when it was time for discharge, I told the kid, or the guy, ready for discharge. He said, "I don't know what to do." I said, "What do you mean?" He said, "Other than drugs, I don't know what else to do with life." That was, that was the moment when I realized that we needed a better, a better public health or healthcare system beyond the walls of the hospital. And that's why I'm here. I would really love to raise the standards of public health for the most vulnerable populations in Cambridge. And I think this is a unique opportunity. You look at me, I have a public health background. You look at me, I have diversity. You look at me, I have professionalism. You look at me, I have everything that you want. I, and maybe sometimes everything that you don't want. But I'm here, you know, and I think, I think, I think this is a great opportunity for, for Cambridge. And I, and I, you know, I would love to have your number one vote. Thank you for all, you know, thank you all for staying so late. You are definitely beyond my parents' bedtime. And some of you, you guys all look phenomenal, but some of you look older than my parents. So, thank you all for being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, hi again, everybody. My name is Stanislav Rivkin. I think that we need to return to how we opened this forum, which is asking folks what brings people together. And I think what brings people together is bold ideas, what brings people together is excitement to make some change. And I think that there are some differences between, you know, some of the challengers and some of the incumbents in this regard. You know, I think it's problematic to criticize someone in a democratic system for proposing solutions to improve something like the way that we support our immigrants, right? I acknowledge that things are being done. Of course, you've been doing things. You would pay $90,000, you would go to work, you've been doing things every single day. But that doesn't mean that, that doesn't mean that the whole point of democracy every two years isn't to raise the things that you could do better. But I do think that having a voice on the city council that doesn't just go along with, you know, the process and every opportunity, that doesn't feel like they have to comply with the precedent or the norms, can actually be really beneficial. I think having someone asking tough questions and forcing the council to confront issues they don't want to confront, even forcing the population to confront issues they don't want to confront, such as what our tax rate should be and what it means to us as progressives to want lower taxes and cutting social services, those are helpful things. Challengers need your vote, only four have lost in the last 10 years. Please rank us first. Thank you.
I hear, thank you for being here and organizing this. I'll keep mine very short as the last one. If you believe in making our city dignified and affordable for everyone, especially under the Trump administration, then join our community. If you believe in change, then vote for it and join us.
Thank you all, and good night.